Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District October 26th Board Meeting. I am A E S D Board President Juan Gabriel Alvarez and I call this meeting to order at 5:00 P. M. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera. Llame al cinco tres cero cuatro dos cuatro nueve seis cero cuatro. Cuando se le pida introduzca el pin o la clave cinco uno ocho cinco cero cinco dos nueve dos y la tecla numeral. Any member of the public has an opportunity to address the board in person during the agendized public comment sessions, or they may choose to submit their public comments online by 12:00 P. M. or in person by 6:30 today. Comments submitted online will be read during the appropriate agendized public session. Let's begin with a board roll call. To my right we have Board Member Mark Lopez.
Present.
We have Board Member Dr. Paulo Macalas.
Present.
We have Board Member Ryan Rellis.
Hello.
Board Clerk Jackie Philbeck.
Hi, everyone.
I'm President Juan Alvarez. Move on to Item 1B, Public Speakers for closed session agenda items. Do we have any public speakers? There are none. Okay, let's move on to adjournment to closed session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion, Rellis, Second Lopez. Any discussion? All in favor to adjourn? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Five zero. Let's adjourn. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District October 26th Board Meeting. I am A E S D Board President Juan Gabriel Alvarez and I call this meeting to order at 5:00 P. M. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera. Llame al cinco tres cero cuatro dos cuatro nueve seis cero cuatro. Cuando se le pida introduzca el pin o la clave cinco uno ocho cinco cero cinco dos nueve dos y la tecla numeral. Any member of the public has an opportunity to address the board in person during the agendized public comment sessions, or they may choose to submit their public comments online by 12:00 P. M. or in person by 6:30 today. Comments submitted online will be read during the appropriate agendized public session. Let's begin with a board roll call. To my right we have Board Member Mark Lopez. Present. We have Board Member Dr. Paulo Macalas.
Present.
We have Board Member Ryan Rellis.
Hello.
Board Clerk Jackie Philbeck.
Hi, everyone.
I'm President Juan Alvarez. Move on to Item 1B, Public Speakers for closed session agenda items. Do we have any public speakers? There are none. Okay, let's move on to adjournment to closed session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion, Rellis, Second Lopez. Any discussion? All in favor to adjourn? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Five zero. Let's adjourn.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School Board Meeting for October 26. I am A E S D Board President Juan Gabriel Alvarez and I call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Spanish interpretation of the board meeting is available to attendees. Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera. Llame al cinco tres cero cuatro dos cuatro nueve seis cero cuatro. Cuando se le pida, presione el pin o la clave cinco uno ocho cinco cero cinco dos nueve dos y la tecla numeral. Let's begin with our flag salute. We have a special guest today. His name is Miguel Jimenez from Roseville. Welcome, Miguel.
States of America, two things under God, invisible under God.
Thank you, Miguel. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to introductions and roll call. To my right, we have Board Member Mark Lopez.
Good evening, everyone.
And we have Board Member Dr. Paulo Macalles.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you all today.
Board Member Ryan Ruelis.
Hello.
Board Clerk Jackie Philbeck.
Good evening. It's great to see you all. It's lovely to see this room full again.
I'm Juan Alvarez, your Board President. And to my left, we have Dr. Christopher Downing, our Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
Dr. Mary Grace, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
Good evening.
Deana Meland, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening.
Jesse Chavaria, our Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services.
Good evening, everyone.
And to my right, we have Tracy Golden, our Senior Director of School Safety and Operations.
Good evening, everyone.
And then we have Yesenia Urdeño, our Senior Administrative Assistant.
Good evening, everyone.
In the back, we have our interpreters, Alina Avila Roque and Ismael Madrigal today? Not sure. Okay. And they're in the back. And then we also have Janice Cado, to my left, our Technology Support Technician. And in the back, in the room, the tech room, we have Brian Brooks and Benjamin Hausman, our Media Production Specialists. All right, we're moving on to reports of closed session. Moving on to reports of closed session, there are none, no actions taken. Adoption of the agenda. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion, Ruelis.
Second.
Second, Lopez. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five zero. Let's move on to Special Order of Business. First, we have a recognition of the District-wide Distinguished Fourth Grade Creative Writing Project Winners. We have Katie Hernandez, our Curriculum Specialist, Guadalupe Gomez, our Library Services Manager, and with the Anaheim Public Library, Carol Latham, immediate past president, immediate past president with Altrusa International Foundation of Anaheim. Welcome. And let's get this, come on up.
Board President Alvarez and esteemed board members, it's my honor to introduce everyone and give a little background about tonight's recognition. The Anaheim Elementary School District Creative Writing Project began in 2014 with the support of Altrusa International of Anaheim and the Anaheim Public Library. Its purpose was to encourage the creative writing skills of our fourth grade students and increase their love of reading. It began at Ponderosa Elementary where there was a library shared by both A E S D and the Anaheim Public Library. It has since grown to become a district-wide project that every single fourth grade student participates in. The theme of this project is finding my voice, telling my story. It is an opportunity for students to make connections to their teacher and to each other by writing down stories from their lives that have impacted them in some way. A judging team at each school selects one fourth grade author to represent the school. Today, we are recognizing those students as our A E S D Distinguished Creative Writers. About a round of applause. So we are honored this evening to have our partners in this work. First of all, I'd like to recognize Katie Hernandez for her outstanding support for this program in our district. And please join me in welcoming Carol Latham of Altrusa International of Anaheim and Guadalupe Gomez of the Anaheim Public Library to share some more information about the project and honor our winners.
Thank you, Dr. Downing. As you've heard, this project started a while back, 2014. And it started in the first school, then we added three schools, and now we are so excited that it is district-wide in all 24 schools. The opportunity for these young scholars to write about their experience is powerful. And for them to be able to find their voices and tell their stories is a testament to how their voice makes a difference, not only in their lives, but in the lives of their fellow students and in their families. The fact that they get heard is so important. And I wanted to just share with you, one of my club members is also here, Beth Pelfrey. We're so excited about this project, and it has grown, and we are hoping for bigger and even better things with this. But I found two quotes that I wanted to share with you writers, who are now published authors, and your parents. Books let you fight dragons. Meet the love of your life, travel to faraway lands, and laugh alongside friends all within their pages. They're an escape that brings you home. And so I hope that not only in writing, but in reading, that you get to go to distant lands, you get to experience things that are way beyond your imagination right now, but it helps you to grow as individuals and as better human beings. And I want you to know, young writers, that who you are, who you are, is important, and that you matter. Your feelings matter. Your voice matters. Your story matters, and your life matters always. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. On behalf of Anaheim Public Library, I want to congratulate all of you, all of the students that are here. Each student receives a book from the library, all of the participants. That's 1,977. And 24 of you are here. So congratulations. As I look out, just as Ms. Latham said, I see authors, but I see a couple of librarians as well. So please continue writing and learning. And parents, felicidades, congratulations for encouraging your children. Because as you know, your students are here, and each of you, you represent not only yourselves, your classmates, your school, your community, and most importantly, your family. So thank you for sharing your voice with us. Y nuevamente, padres, felicidades.
So everyone, first, we're going to ask our board members to please come down. And we're going to call your name. We're going to ask you to come up. You will receive a certificate, a fist pump, a bag, and then please greet our board members as well. And parents, at the end, when all of our students are assembled, we're going to take pictures. And we're going to make a lot of noise and celebrate them, okay? Is that fair? All right. And thank you to our teachers, our administrators, our classified staff members, and everyone who's here from the school sites to support these great students this evening. All right, first, please join me in recognizing from Anaheim Elementary Online Academy, Ethan James. That's how you do it, everybody. Did you see that? Okay. Go that way, Ethan. Same for them. Ethan, you're going to start us off, and all the students, you're going to remain up here. Next, everyone, please join us in recognizing from Clara Barton Elementary School, Nia Garcia. Yes, the goodie bags are very heavy, so be ready. Next, from Thomas Edison Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Aldo Mendoza Alcantara. Next, representing Benjamin Franklin Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Isabel Miranda. We will make sure Isabel receives her certificate. Next, representing Gower Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Gwen Lynn Heaton. Next, representing Gwen Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Andres Duque Okchua. Next, representing Henry Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Evelyn Barrera. Next, representing Thomas Jefferson Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Maquin Abdul Kadir. Next, representing Benito Juarez Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Devon Courtney. Next, representing Abraham Lincoln Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Sofia Fregoso. Next, representing Loera Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Genevieve Garcia. Next, representing Madison Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Amelia Limon. Next, representing Horace Mann Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Stephanie Espinosa. Next, representing Marshall Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Aleah Miranda. Elijah Miranda. Congratulations. And Elijah corrected me, so let me get it perfectly correct. Elijah Miranda. One more round of applause. Next, representing Olive Street Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Italia Reyes Molina. Next, representing Orange Grove Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Mason Simmons. Next, representing Ponderosa Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Angel Rodriguez. Next, representing Price Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Camila Perez. Next, representing Paul Revere Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Kyla Lazaro. Next, representing Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Carlos Guzman. Next, representing Betsy Ross Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Melody Gorrado. Next, representing Alexander J. Stoddard Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Maximiliano Carranza. Next, representing Sunkist Elementary School, please join us in recognizing Francine Lealop. And our last recipient, please join us in recognizing from Westmont Elementary School, Javier Diamond. So parents, school representatives, we're going to take a picture with our board, so please, this is their paparazzi moment. First, Dr. Grace.
Hello, everybody. We're going to take a short break, about five minutes, while we convene around 7:00 PM.
Val, what's her husband's name?
Ivan.
Does he work here? Okay.
Hi, everybody. If we can start getting back into our seats, thank you. All right, let's convene again, thank you. All right, we're on to item five, news and updates. Parent leadership group updates, there are none. Oh, I apologize, PTA is here. Welcome, PTA, you have the floor.
Good evening. Okay, sorry. The rush, okay. Good evening, AESD board members. My name is Candace Lesser. I am the current PTA president for Anaheim Elementary Council PTA, sorry. I'm honored to represent our 24 units here at AESD. Our council is here to help coordinate the efforts of our unit members, providing them with the tools and knowledge to help them be successful in not only their school sites, but also in their communities. In collaboration with Fourth District Mentor and with the support of AESD, we have been able to provide training such as optimizing the principal, PTA president, and Faces partnership for school success, building the financial team, our reflections training, and just yesterday was also our tax training. The trainings are not just for our PTA units, but they are also for supporting staff, like our Faces, principals, and other staff members that have joined our boards. We are also providing one-on-one support. Excuse me, our units are currently having their membership drives to help them reach their goals. With, we appreciate the support when you buy your membership, and we also like having you at the events as well. That really shows who you are, so they know who you are. Because we talk about you, but they don't know who you are. So if you're there to represent, it really stands out. Also, we are lucky to have Ms. Jackie Felvic at our association meetings. We appreciate your support over the years, and we only get to showcase her. So when you guys show up to our associations, we could say, hey, this is for your area, or for your school. So with that said, okay, our reflections program is currently in the process of judging our schools that have forwarded on our first-place winners. We will be here to present those moving on to fourth district. Don't know when, but hopefully soon. During our hybrid association meetings, which from my understanding, we are the only large council providing them. So thank you, AESD, for supporting us to be able to give our parents the virtual meetings as well as in-person. We are, let's see. Okay, our units are also taking, while providing these meetings, I'm sorry, our units take part in seeing how a meeting is ran. They hear about available resources from PLI and from other resources, as well as they hear the different opportunities to be a part of discussions and give their insights on important topics that are taking place here at AESD. So thank you, AESD, for coming and giving our parents a floor to be a part of things. And with that, I will close. Our council strives to help our PTA units with their parent involvement and to bring back fun events for our kids and families while still keeping them in compliance. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Do we have Dak Dilek here presenting, or PLI? Nope? All right, let's go to association updates. Do we have any updates from our associations? None? Okay. And then district news and updates are none, right? Okay. Let's move on to public speakers, speakers on non-agenda or non-agenda items. Looks like we have three speakers today. Looks like we have three speakers today. We're going to start with Scarlett Almero, if you can come up to the microphone. All right, just so you know, you have three minutes to speak.
I'm poor of hearing.
Oh, sorry.
And so when my time is up, please wave or scream. Oh, okay, thank you. I do have my hearing aids. I do have my hearing aids in.
Yeah, so this is one minute left, and red means stop.
Thank you. Board President, Superintendent, and Board, people in the audience. Wow, what a beautiful presentation to walk into. I'm, as a parent, very, very happy that I came today. And I hope at the conclusion of my speech, happy parents, happy students, happy school board, is what I hope will happen. I was born in San Diego, went to school first and second grade there. Went to your elementary schools, second, and then the other schools through tenth. My brother and sister did as well. My sister became a nurse. I dropped out of community college and worked in a factory for 42 years until I was laid off. My children went to Sunkist, did the community colleges. My son is a U C San Diego graduate doing research on zebrafish at Salt Lake City right now. He's done, this is his third research. And my daughter is a Berkeley grad at Columbia. She's not happy at Columbia. Maybe she'll come home and go to San Jose, but anyway, she did make it into Columbia. The problem. I have an alcoholic brother for 50 years. Trying to get him help, he lived with my mother for 10 years. Got carried out on an ambulance because he wouldn't surrender. Went to the hospital, went to jail, bailed out by his son, lived with me two years, eight months. I searched for help. Even when I was raising the kids, it was hard. But we made it. I'm an Anaheim 30-year homeowner. This May, I had to, we parted ways, and he is now homeless. On those counts, they're wobblers, but they want to go ahead, and instead of misdemeanor, they want them to be felonies. One was dropped. He's facing three felonies, probably will face jail. I've been around to the resource centers, was at your, I'll call it Anaheim PTA, PTA yesterday, and I gave out a list of resources. 13 pages that I got from the Salvation Army two weeks ago. I'm just, I'm handing out about 12 or 13 to various organizations. You received one, Ms. Yacindra Moreno received it, whatever these organizations. We just came out of COVID inflation. We need help, people. We need help. Again, happy families, happy board. I'm hoping that that list will help, even if they just call NAMI and talk to a peer. A bad day may go to a good, a good day. Thank you for listening. Appreciate the help.
Thank you. All right, next we have Victoria Bolanco. Hi, Victoria, you have three minutes. When we hold up the yellow card, that means you have one minute left, and then red means that your time's up. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Last week, my son, Richard Anthony Mariscal, a sixth grader, top-performing student at Stoddart, was assaulted. An unprovoked assault, punched in the head to try to inflict a concussion and head injury. The student who assaulted returned to the classroom as normal, his normal schedule. The district has known for over a year of assaults, threats, and have been slow to act. Everybody in the superintendent's office has been contacted. My son has missed four days of school because of the head injury and assault. The attacker, once again, returned as normal. All kids at the school think this behavior will go unpunished. This is why this attacker and this assault happened. A student I've been reporting, as kids are walking out, she has been assaulting them. Assaulted a student today. My son was not there. She returned back to her classroom, just like my son's attacker. So far, the board knows, I've sent emails, district, I'm sorry, text. District and principal know of attacks and fail to send a sterile tolerance to bullying and take a stand on assaults, gang attire, gang signs, and threats. How would you, Superintendent, like to sit next to your attacker, who punched you in the head, face him all day in your office with no accountability? How would you feel on a daily basis? That's what your director said to me. They would not move the attacker and assaulter from my son's classroom. Is that not psychological and emotional abuse? It's unacceptable. This is part of a deep-rooted issue in this country that enables attackers to target schools, teachers, and children, vulnerable little ones. How do you sleep at night? So far, I have zero confidence that anybody's children at Anaheim School District are safe. No one is safe at your Anaheim schools. I have yet to be informed of the process and rights that my son has. The proper procedure was to contact the police department and inform them of an assault on campus of my son. That never happened. The principal's response was so disrespectful. The wasted time and energy in the office, meeting with the superintendent's director, sitting right there. A complete waste of time. Director of safety, I have zero faith. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Julie Klinkenberg. Come on up. All right, three minutes. When the yellow card goes up, you have a minute left, and red means time up.
Hi, my name's Julie Klinkenberg. I teach fourth grade at the Anaheim Elementary Online Academy, and I wanted to first sandwich my comments with positives, saying thank you for creating an alternate safe space for students, many who were formerly marginalized, and now they feel super safe and are making more growth and progress outside the traditional school setting. I'm super glad I took the risk, and I love where I work. But I wanted to say I'm speaking for myself. I'm speaking for Julie Klinkenberg. I am not wearing an association hat, AKA union. This is just me. I just wanted to get something off my chest, and I didn't know who to send this message to. I know it's not town hall setting. I'm just going to make this statement, and if anyone wants to email me later, I'd be great, I would be glad to engage in a conversation. So I'm addressing my comments to everyone, the cabinet, the trustees, and other esteemed leaders here. I just wanted you to know my feelings were deeply hurt last month when we received a message from Dr. Downing that during parent conference days, we were expected to stay on-site all day during those two non-student days. Okay, I'm not naive. I realize some of my peers might need that explicit, direct instructions. I know some of my peers need that clear expectation spelled out, but does it need to be a blanket statement to everyone? I, I feel like admin needs to have these courageous conversations with the chronic people that abuse that. I, I just, I was deeply hurt. Many of us work late on the other days, or we work hours on the weekends. If you knew how long I worked on the weekend, preparing conference notes, the scheduling, looking at data, comments, presentations. So I was well-prepared for successful conferences. Many of us start meeting with parents before the two non-student days. We are the kings and queens of customer service in Anaheim Elementary School District. We, we beat ourselves up accommodating parent work schedules. I would come in early before I taught and do schedule, do conferences. So the two days, yeah. Some of us are at sites where it used to even be okay. It was the school culture. You'd have one early day and one late day. And, and again, that was to build customer service. So when I read the message in the, the principal, sorry, superintendent's weekly bulletin newsletter, and then my principal repeated it in her newsletter, my feelings were hurt. I was sad. I was disappointed. I felt unseen, unheard, not valued. And to make me stay, in my case, until 2:37 on a Friday, when I could have left at 2:00, I was exhausted. It was unproductive. I was empty, and it was not good for my mental health. So thank you for listening. Again, I acknowledge some of my peers are not as organized, dedicated, committed, or accurate as maybe I am, but please just talk to them, or tell the site admin to have these private courageous conversations. Don't punish all of us. It's like in the old days when you would keep your class in for recess. Sorry, I'm over time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so let's go on to the superintendent's report. We have a presentation of the 2022 through 26, 2026 district goals by Dr. Christopher Downing, our superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening, board members and Anaheim community. This evening, it is my honor to share with you our proposed A E S D draft district goals, representing the 2022 through 2026 school years. These goals were not written in isolation, but instead, these are a culmination of many conversations with our stakeholders and an effort to provide consistency across our district and high expectations for every one of our school sites and offices. I'd just like to share with you some of the feedback opportunities that were provided in terms of these goals. We began on August 26th with our leadership team, and we're joined by President Candace Lesser this evening, and we shared at the August 30th PTA meeting, inviting feedback from all present. We also shared these goals at the DAC D-LAC meeting on September 6th, our LCAP meeting on September 7th, our P L I meeting on September 15th. And we're also joined this evening by Wendy Mendez, representing P L I, as well as Hilda Sanchez, representing DAC D-LAC as their vice president. Finally, we shared across our entire district on September 29th, giving every staff member the opportunity to provide feedback. And we culminated this feedback opportunity on October 6th by sending out our district goals in both English, Spanish, and Korean, and also providing a survey in those three languages to allow feedback from the community and from our families. Our goals are built on the LCAP state priorities, and the topics are conditions for learning, pupil outcomes, and engagement. And our board, on June 22nd, approved our three district LCAP goals to drive our continuous improvement efforts and ensure that our data-determined needs of stakeholders are addressed. So for our LCAP goals, here in A E S D, we have conditions for learning, pupil outcomes, and student and parent engagement. For these goals, we broke those into different areas, and I will take you through some of them this evening. First of all, our conditions for learning. And the Anaheim Elementary School District is committed to providing the highest-quality conditions for learning for all students. And I will share with you some of the strategies for success that we are going to ensure are taking place across our district. Our first strategy for success is to provide a safe school environment for all students and staff that support a welcoming environment, maximize their social, emotional wellness and academic improvement, and include a comprehensive emergency preparedness plan. That means that we treat each individual student with respect, that we thoroughly investigate all issues, that we do not default to suspensions when they are not warranted, and we ensure the safety of every student every single day in our district. We provide each student with equitable daily access to high-quality 21st-century teaching and learning. And, board members, I promise, and I commit not to read these slides to you, but to summarize, and I know that you appreciate that. Our next strategy for success is around, again, district safety practices. And this is something that we take very seriously. It is our top priority. We conduct reviews at all of our schools. We have ongoing training and drills on safety and active threats. And again, we are encouraged by the participation of our entire staff and some of the efforts that came out of the COVID pandemic. We annually update our comprehensive school safety plan, and when necessary, provide safety plans for students that need it. We also assign and appropriately evaluate staff to ensure high-quality, culturally-responsive instruction. And throughout, you're going to hear culturally-responsive instruction, because that is a priority for our district. We want our students to see themselves in their learning, see themselves in the curriculum. And that is something that our stakeholders spoke loud and clear, and they wanted to see that in our goals. In addition to those strategies for success in each of our areas, we have measures of achievement. How will we know we are being successful? So we're going to ensure that our district has policies that follow the California Department of Public Health guidance and Cal OSHA regulations, and that there is 100% legal compliance with safety laws. We ensure that 100% of our students have daily access to a district device. We are truly a 1.1-to-1 district, which means we have more than one device for every student. And that was very evident when the pandemic hit. Unlike other districts, we were able to immediately send home to over 90% of our students on the day that we went to distance learning a device. And then the others were able to come up to school and retrieve their device. Again, it is our goal, it is our obligation, to support and monitor appropriately-assigned, trained, and evaluated staff. For pupil outcomes, and these pupil outcomes talk about teaching and leadership in a culturally and linguistically responsive manner. And you will see some of our students that we are calling out, because we want to make sure, based on our data, that we are supporting our emergent bilingual students. Now, for those of you who are tuning in and might be in other districts, it is likely in your district they are called English learners. We feel strongly that's a deficit categorization of these students. Indeed, they are emergent bilingual, and they are becoming bilingual. We value their multiple languages. We value linguistic bilingualism in our district. We're also focusing on our low-income, students with disabilities, foster youth, and homeless students. And for those who are not aware, our district has approximately 9% of our students who identify as homeless. So these categories of students you will see throughout, but truly, these goals are intended for every single student in the Anaheim Elementary School District. What are our strategies for success for pupil outcomes? Well, again, they focus on high-quality first teaching, formative assessments, differentiated instruction, and interventions. In our goal document, we have outlined best instructional practices, strategies for sustaining instruction. And then in our district, we implement bimonthly professional learning communities, where our teachers receive release time, and students are engaged in activities so that teams of teachers can plan future instruction based on these formative assessments, create action plans for students, and help drive academic improvement. We are going to ensure research-based strategies to provide asset-based support for mastery of a second language. We are the only district in California to have a dual-language immersion program at every single school. As you are aware, because you approved this direction for our district, we were the first district in Orange County to have a Korean program, and we look forward to our upcoming conversations where we will identify a new language to support in our district. In addition, at our schools, they will annually update their SciTech Plan, which is Science Instructional Technology, Esport, and Coding Plan. Because we know that through STEAM and through SciTech, we are going to align our funding to ensure that we refresh our technology. As you are aware, a device As you are aware, a device has nowadays a lifespan of two to three years, but in our district, we continuously refresh and update our devices. This is illustrated by our move to Promethean devices in every one of our classrooms to allow more interactive instruction with our teachers. We've also outlined some measures of achievement. So these measures are based on our baseline, star reading data, star math data, writing assessment, and science assessment. Our goal is to grow by twenty percent over a four-year period with five percent growth each year. We will be coming back to the board on an annual basis and/or periodically to share updates on our progress towards meeting these goals. And that's what is important about this document. It is now, we are nearing the end of the pandemic, this is an opportunity for us to reflect on where our students are, and again, across our district, to have expectations for their growth. Again, we have targets in reading, writing, math, and science. And in terms of engagement, while L cap focuses on engagement in one area, we have expanded that into two, so we are focusing on student engagement and wellness support, as well as family and community engagement. So I want to start with student engagement and wellness support. Here are our strategies for success, and again, I talked about this a little earlier, but it's important. We are going to increase students' sense of belonging and their engagement by providing curricula that are culturally and linguistically responsive. As the board is aware, we have a crest task force of stakeholders that help us review our curriculum and make recommendations about trainings that our district participates in. We're pleased that on November first, for our professional development, we're going to be joined by Dr. Victor Rios, a nationally-known speaker, a high school dropout who overcame all of the barriers that he faced to go on to become a Ph.D. So that is the kind of message that our staff will hear and engage in. That is the kind of message that drives our improvement, where we recognize the worth of every student as they walk through our door. We're going to increase attendance rates by working in collaboration with families, not a punitive approach, but collaboration to encourage students to attend school. And we know the key to attendance is engagement. If a student is not engaged in their everyday instruction, they do not want to attend school. So that is a focus area for us. We're going to ensure the daily use of positive behavioral interventions and support, not defaulting to suspensions, which research has shown are not always effective, but incentives and ways to promote improvement of behavior. We also have a cost team at every school, and thank you, board, for approving additional counselors at every school, additional behavior support staff at every school, which has made a tremendous difference as our students have returned from distance learning. We also want to promote student leadership and preparation for college and career readiness. And I'm very proud of this picture. This was from our College and Career Week, and I had the good fortune to be assigned to a kindergarten classroom and to talk about college and career with five-year-olds, and to have them follow up and to do research about what is their favorite college. That's happening across our district. We celebrate a College and Career Week. We have our Anaheim pledge, and again, this is the kind of student leadership we promote. Also, and we'll get to that shortly in our E L O P program, we have a student leadership program where the students are identifying strategies for positive behavior across the school, identifying what are the incentives that other students would like, what would motivate them to be more engaged. So an opportunity, when your child attends the Anaheim Elementary School District, they will leave with leadership opportunities under their belt. What are our measures of achievement? And again, our district goal document, following the hopeful approval by our board, will be shared in our schools and offices. It will be posted to our website in English, Spanish, and Korean, and we invite all members of the community to view it and still provide any feedback that you might have. We're going to focus on social emotional competence, again, increasing, and this is using survey data, those students responding favorably in the domain of emotion regulation. So one of the great practices of our district is every year, we ask our third through sixth grade students, what is your experience like here at school? And they give us data that we can use to drive improvement. We're also going to focus on school culture and climate, and again, a sense of belonging as measured by Panorama student survey data. And in our conversations with parents, it was very clear to us that our parents are in favor of our focus on social emotional competence, on our focus on school culture, because they share our belief that engagement of students is a key to success, and then also the engagement of our families. So we'll talk about that next. Last on this page is our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. I'm very pleased that, based on today's data, we now have eight thousand six hundred and twenty-eight students, which is fifty-nine percent of our TK through sixth grade students who are remaining after school every single day to have an enriched activities and opportunity to interact with their peers. And that speaks volume to the needs of our community, but it speaks volumes also that we are providing a quality program and opportunity for them to remain. Thank you, Dr. Moreno. Parents and students will feel welcomed and cared for at all A E S D sites. This picture was taken at Fullerton College, where parents attended workshops on college. And again, to our viewers, these are parents of elementary students who want information to begin planning and to understand better what it takes in terms of the curriculum, what it takes in terms of preparation for their students to go on to college and to be successful. Another great opportunity that is provided by this is some of our parents who attended, perhaps they didn't have the opportunity to go to college and to walk on the campus and to experience this opportunity is something that we're very proud of and something that we were especially pleased to be able to do again after a three-year absence. Next, as you can see, our P L I, which is award-winning, commonly known as our blue shirts, but the fabric of our district, parents leading other parents through trainings, through conversation, through mentorship. In terms of strategies for success, we want to increase the number of families that participate in school-side parent events annually. And I want to thank Ms. Slusser for pointing out that we are the only large district to do our meetings both in person and virtually. Why are we doing this? Because throughout the pandemic, we saw there was a high degree of engagement of families that maybe can't always come up to a campus or can't always go to one of our meetings, but they want to participate. So we're providing that opportunity this year, and it is our goal to continue that because it allows more engagement. We want to offer, as I just said, in-person and virtual access. We, on an ongoing basis, conduct meetings of identified advisory groups. We also have created a district-wide parent learning center where we're partnering with Fresno University, where we're partnering with N O C E to offer trainings to parents. And if they complete trainings, they will receive certificates of participation. We've created a technology room where parents can come in and learn things like digital literacy, financial literacy. So there's a wealth of different trainings that we are launching and continuing from the past that we are very proud of, and this is driven by our interactions with parents. If you've ever had a chance to attend one of our P L I meetings, before the pandemic, we had our meetings in this room. We've outgrown this room. At our last P L I meeting, we had approximately two hundred people participating, and it's inspiring to see parents give of their time with a commitment to help others. What are our measures of achievement? I'm very proud of this picture taken at Barton Elementary School because this year, they had an opportunity to open a parent learning center. And I happened to stop by the school, and they were engaged in a training session that was very personal. It was customized for their parents. But there were also those joining online, and it exemplified our goal, which is to have these opportunities at every one of our schools. We want to conduct YouTube parent tutorials. We want to conduct trainings on various topics. And again, as part of our district goals, this is a living document. There will be other topics that come from parent leaders, come from parents who just want to send a message to the district that there's a need, and we will support those trainings. Communication with stakeholders, something that's very important. Our board prioritizes effective communication in public relations by our district to promote greater understanding of and support for public education. How are we going to accomplish that? Well, our strategies for success are to provide consistent communication, and we've been doing that, and we'll continue to send a family letter at least twice a month. Our school sites also send family letter. This year, we've adopted Parent Square to increase our communication. It has more flexibility in terms of the messaging that can be sent. We, again, communicate information about district safety, operations, and our programs. We also conduct ongoing meetings of stakeholder advisory groups. And as part of our strategies for success, we want to expand access to universal pre-kindergarten, which is a focus of our state, and that includes the California State Preschool Program and Transitional Kindergarten. We are proud that we have historically had transitional kindergarten classes, not generating A D A for our district, but having these classes because we want our students to have a foundation in place. We want them to have the opportunity from the time for our preschool program, they're three years old, to come into our system, to experience growth. And this year, we have currently approximately forty-four transitional kindergarten classes. So truly, we continue to expand our U P K while a lot of districts across the state are just now implementing it. So we're very proud of that, and that will continue to be a strategy for success. Another measures of achievement, publish a bimonthly family letter, conduct principal chats. At all of our schools, on a monthly basis, our principals interact with their families. They are invited to come on to the campus, to hear information, to ask questions, to have discussions, and we would invite all. When you have concerns, attend the principal chat, and you have a chance to interact directly with the site leader. Often, our vice principals attend as well. We'll have staff counselors who are there to answer questions, and again, we invite all parents to participate. We've talked about Parent Square. We are also going to continue to use the district panorama survey data to establish and maintain baseline communication satisfaction. So we're going to use data. What are the ways that we need to improve? We're going to be a district of continuous improvement, and we will never be satisfied. So again, as these district goals are distributed and hopefully approved this evening, we invite you, please give us feedback. We're also going to continue to conduct our Start Smart Neighborhood. We're joined by Faith Daverin, who is our A E A president and who this year participated in Start Smart and helped us encourage families to enroll or attend school. So everyone, that's a snapshot of our district goals, and board members, I welcome any questions. This is the copy. I want to thank Board President Alvarez, who has a letter to families. And again, it is our goal to publish this to our website, pending board approval, but I would invite our cabinet to join me in answering any questions or concerns that the board might have.
Just to, wow, that's a lot. I'm kind of overwhelmed right now, but awesome, amazing, amazing work to everybody who contributed to this amazing document. Talk about, you know, shifting towards whole-child instruction, right? We're reaching so many different levels when it comes to our curriculum and services and all the things that we do for our students. So incredibly proud, very proud of all of the work. Of course, as a researcher within the field of education, I'm very impressed with, you know, the culturally relevant ethnic studies teaching and curriculum, the community-relevant teaching. And I wanted to make a few comments earlier, but I don't know if we had the opportunity to with regards to this published piece by our very own students from every single school site. This is culturally-relevant teaching, right? This is our stories, her stories, his stories, their stories, the stories of our youth, the experiences of our students, and it's what's being studied. It's what's being praised. I love, of course, that at the district level for the last, what, three, four years now, we've gone away from, you know, deficit models of learning and calling our emergent, rather than calling E L Ls, English Language Learners, now from more of an asset lens to emergent bilingual, we have totally shifted, you know? And I love that, you know, a lot of districts are looking at some of the models that we've been creating, right? As the largest elementary school district in the state of California, so, gosh, there's so much I want to share, but that was a lot. Great work. I don't have any questions. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. McCullough.
No question, just a comment. I just want to say, once again, with my friends that are in education, other educators in other districts and whatnot, and I talk about always, of course, how great Anaheim Elementary School District is. I utilized the ones that we had set before, the other goals that we had, and the manner in which it was laid out to really prove my point to all of them and to show them the manner in which we approach things, the various ways, strategies we're going to be utilizing, but not just stopping there, because that's all well and good, but unless you basically have a way of showing how we're going to measure it, it's just fluff. So I do appreciate that quite a bit. I think that it is, as my colleague, Dr. McCullough, said, it's so much information, but it's so important, this information, and it's just super rich and just makes me so proud of our district and all of the work that you all do, as well as our fantastic teachers, classified administrators, and all of our stakeholders here. This document truly makes me proud of what we're doing here in A E S D.
Thank you, board member.
I'll just tag onto that because everything they said is what I'm also feeling. Thank you so much. Got a lot of work in this, and to me, I'm very proud to see, nothing's left out. It's all covered, and it's especially exciting to see where we want to be and how we're going to get there and all of the ways that we're going to use and encompass to achieve these goals. So to me, that's really exciting. I have no doubt we'll get there, and it's just so well thought out and laid out, and I appreciate that. And I'm just really, every time I look at this, I'm just... every time I look at this, I'm just so proud of this district, as my colleagues have said. So thank you for all the work, for everyone that put work into this.
Thank you, board clerk.
I just want to say thanks to you and your team as well. So just to echo my colleagues. You know, I'm not in the business trying to outdo anybody on the compliments. I think, I appreciate everything that you do. I know you do a lot behind the scenes. All of our staff does. So I just want to give you guys kudos for that. So it looks like all of the LCAP priorities are being well addressed. So, and I appreciate it's ongoing as well. It's not a finish line. It's not a destination, but it's a journey. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Journey, I like that. I do have a quick question, though. I forgot. So next Tuesday, the teachers are doing the professional development training with Dr. Rios. Wow, that's awesome. I think he was at CSBA a couple of years back. Perfect story, right, for our population. Real quick question, though. Are we allowed to go? I want to see this. Oh, it's at different sites. Okay. Awesome. Wonderful.
Yes, we will make sure you receive your link.
Yeah, send us the link, please. I'm a fan.
Yeah, everyone, I was talking about how proud we are. I don't even know the word to express. It's beyond proud, right? This document just encapsulates the reason, I think, why we're part of this board, right? Just seeing the direction that our board has gone and the work that you all are doing in cabinet and staff and everyone involved in making sure that everything's working as best as it can. I can't even, I don't even know how to express how thankful I am to be a parent in this district as well. Like, I step back and like, our kids are so lucky. We like, we won the jackpot, right? We could have ended up in a neighboring district and I'm so glad we're here. And so I just, I'm just, I'm really excited for the work that we're going to continue doing. And I'm just like, I don't know, I just, I'm thrilled about it. And this document just kind of, it's all, it's all there. It's summarized for us in a nice little package. This is what we're going to do, is we're aiming to get achieved. And here you go, right? Take a look. So thank you so much for your work on putting this together.
Sorry, I had to add one more thing, Mr. President. It's okay. One thing that also stood out was that we are not utilizing punitive discipline measures within our students, right? Because a national issue is the school to prison and the school to deportation pipeline, right? You can't argue the data, right? There's too much close with regard to that match with the way in which we treat our students in schools and the link to the prison industrial complex. So I'm very happy that we are not utilizing punitive discipline measures that the research suggests does not work, right? You cannot argue with me against that because it doesn't. It's actually incarcerated more of our community members and that needs to end. So I am happy that we are going away from traditional punishment methods. It doesn't work nationally. So I just had to say that as well. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item eight, consent calendar. Items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the board in one motion. There is no discussion of these items unless a member of the board, staff, or public requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Are there any items that board members would like to pull at this moment?
I have one.
Oh, you do?
Go ahead.
I would like to please pull E4.
Okay.
E.
E4.
As in Exxon, four.
Any others?
Yes, I will pull only for the purpose of abstaining. I believe it's on page four, eight, A5, that you will find on page four, agreement with the Anaheim Family YMCA. Page four, five. Eight, A5. And that's just for the purpose of abstaining. I don't need discussion.
And it was the E4. All right, thank you. All right, so. I may have a motion to approve the remaining consent calendar minus items E4 and eight.
So moved.
I have a motion from, I didn't hear.
Second.
Motion from Lopez, seconded by Relis. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five zero. Let's move on to item E4.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to discuss?
Seven?
Seven.
I'll make a motion.
A motion to discuss by Lopez. I'll second that. All right.
Thank you. I pulled this item today just because of the fact that at our last board meeting, we had a group of parents that came in here who kind of spoke passionately about safety and rightfully so. And I just want to basically commend Dr. Downing and Jesse Chavaria for basically taking action right away, heading down to Ponderosa, talking with the team there. And a shout out to basically the swift action because obviously we take safety in this district very seriously. And a shout out to Dr. Valdez, as well as Principal Sales over at Paul Revere, and Principal Nichols over at Edison for also bringing to light some issues. I want to address this and I pulled it today to just let people know and let the public know that we take safety very seriously, you know? And the safety of our children here in AESD is one of our number one priorities. So just kudos to both, for all, everybody that was involved. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, all in favor of approving item E4, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five zero. Let's go to page four.
I'll move the item.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Lopez, second by Relis, item eight, eight, A5, right? Go ahead. Any discussion? Discussion?
I only pulled it in order to abstain.
Okay, all right. All in favor of approving this item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And then abstentions?
One abstention.
One abstention. So the motion carries four, one. Thank you. All right. Okay, moving on to superintendent's office. It's recommended Board of Education approve an agreement between the district and Anaheim Family YMCA, two, four, zero, South Euclid Street, Anaheim, California, nine, two, eight, oh, two, to provide program administration, staffing, equipment, materials, training, data collection, and evaluation for the California Department of Education After School Education and Safety Program. The Anaheim Achieves Program will continue at 23 AESD schools for the 2022.
I'm so sorry. I'm lost here.
Oh, that was the item that we just pulled.
Yeah, I thought we had passed all those already.
I apologize.
No worries.
Action calendar. My apologies. Thank you. So sorry. Stop me sooner.
I was like, I didn't want to speak up and then be like, can't you read? You know? Sorry, yeah.
Don't feel bad. Just call me out.
Take two.
And action, calendar. Okay, superintendent's office. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the 2022 through 2026 district goals.
So moved.
A motion from Relis, second Lopez. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five zero. Move on to educational services. It's recommended the Board of Education adopt resolution number 2022 dash twenty-three slash two zero in support of the Arts and Music in Schools Funding Guarantee and Accountability Act through the Anaheim Elementary School District.
Happy to move this item. Thank you.
I'll second it. So second Alvarez. Any good discussion? All right, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five zero. Item C, Selpa, there are no items. Item D, Human Resources. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the appointment of applicant number one, oh, two, six, two, zero, two, two, dash, zero, one, to the position of Leadership Assistant effective October 27, 2022, at a site to be determined.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Relis, second by Lopez. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five zero. Dina?
Congratulations to Kristi Pluhar Beeson. Kristi began working in AESD in 1999 as a sixth grade teacher at Benjamin Franklin School and is currently working as a technology curriculum specialist. We congratulate Kristi as she begins her new position as an ELOP Leadership Assistant.
All right, let's move on to item D, Administrative Services, there are none. And item 10, Board Discussion, Board Member Activities Related to School Business, beginning with trustee Lopez.
Thank you very much, President Alvarez. And I just want to start my comments this evening by thanking trustee Relis for bringing up the, for pulling the item in Ponderosa. Because, and the reason I bring it up is because I was able to attend a Knowledge Saves Lives sponsored event that we're partnering with. I want to thank Tracy Golden for the logistics. She's attended all of them, I believe, all the different sites. So she's put a lot of work into this without going into the details because there are certain safety protocols that we are implementing that are not open for public consumption, that are happening all the time, that our staff does take very seriously. I just wanted to state that it was, I think, very helpful for us to have a hands-on opportunity to be at the school site. I know all our staff has been, if they haven't been through it already, they're in the process, scheduled to go through this at least once. So I want to thank Dr. Downing for that, Mr. Chavaria for also walking the sites and checking for any gaps that might exist, working with our Anaheim PD to address any issues that come up. And it was poignant because at the time of this training and the event that we had, North Carolina was the big recent issue that had happened. There was a shooting there that occurred. Now, a couple of days ago, we just had St. Louis. So it's kind of with mixed emotions that we actually have to do this. And we have to have this in mind, that our parents, our students, our families are concerned about this, members of the community. I'm glad that we are at the forefront and I want to thank you again, Ms. Golden, for that. But it is, I'm a little conflicted of the fact that we do have to have this in mind and all of the logistics that go into place about that. So I also wanted to mention, on October 19th, I had the opportunity and the honor to attend the OCSBA dinner, which was at the Irvine Marriott. Dr. Grace was there. My board colleagues, Philbeck and trustee Relis were there. It was a great opportunity to hear about our personal and professional growth and how intertwined they are and having gratitude and how, because we're all human, our personal lives often affect our professional development and our professional relationships and really having that connection with other people. That's the one thing, I think, especially which was pointed out during the presentation, was because of COVID. We're still dealing with that individually, collectively. There's a lot that goes into it and there's a lot that we're still recovering from that we may or may not even be aware of subconsciously. So it was a great presentation. It was great to network and connect with other districts who had representatives there as well. And then finally, I just wanted to conclude my remarks with a Happy Diwali to all of our family, students, community members who may be celebrating that, our five-day Festival of Lights. It began on Monday and will continue for the rest of the week. So I just wanted to say Happy Diwali to those celebrating. Thank you, without concluding my remarks.
Thank you, board member Lopez. Dr. McCullough?
All right. I did visit Madison. Ms. Anna was doing a, I've always wanted to see a presentation on what the 10 Educational Commandments were. And, and wow, it was a two-hour session. There were about eight parents. And talk about college and career readiness early on. Like, I've, first of all, kudos to Ms. Anna, who did the presentation. Like, she just has this character and relationship with the parents. And it wasn't like, you know, very presentation, listen, kind. It was a lot of Q and A. A lot of parents really didn't know how to navigate some systems that are in place when it goes towards the path from elementary, middle school, high school, then college. And then she also had, I forgot the booklet that she had passed out. But wow, the amount of information and, you know, I even gave my number out to some of the parents because, you know, it had like, you know, pages for resources, who to turn to if you have an issue with regards to X, Y, and Z. So awesome job, Ms. Anna. It was great to visit in Madison. Wow, so organized when I got there. So I want to give kudos to all the staff there. I also did an informal visit to Barton. I frequent Barton because it's down the street from my house and I walk my dogs every single day. But when I was walking one day, I saw kindergarteners, right, at Barton Park. And the teacher was just, you know, around a lot of these plants. And I did some research because I'm on the Parks and Rec Commission. A lot of our plants are native to California. And she was doing a lesson on native California plants. And I was like, wow, awesome opportunity to utilize some of her city services, which is adjacent to the school. And it was just so awesome. And, you know, she gave me a shout out, too, and the kindergartener was so cute. And last but not least, I just want to share that. In addition to all my PTA memberships in my trustee area, I also added one more to Price Elementary School. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. McCullough. Remember Relis?
Thank you. I'll go ahead and start off by just saying that, you know, in my new role that I'm in right now professionally, it's allowed me to be in, and trustee Alvarez will testify to this as well, being an assistant principal at the junior high level. It allows me to basically do a lot of connections with our sixth graders and our sixth grade team. And I just want to say that last week, I had an awesome meeting with Principal Kim from the Anaheim Elementary Online Academy and their families that are there, the dynamics of it, talking about what Cambridge Virtual Academy is, how is it different, what is unique about it, what, how do students enroll in it, what is the process. And what's cool about it, and the major thing I walked away with, and I think all our families walked away with, is this. The online academy and online education is not distance learning, okay? By far, it is not. It is a virtual academy. There are standards and whatnot that our teachers teach to that are beyond just content standards. It's about way to engage in a virtual setting with students. And virtual learning isn't for everybody. However, it is an opportunity for those that seek it. And that's just one of the things that myself and my director, as well as Principal Kim, we're all discussing and whatnot. And I really just like this, this connection that we have going with Principal Kim as well as my boss, Ms. Vasquez. The next day, last week was like, and just so you know, it's not like this, my report isn't just about going to schools and whatnot, although that's what I love to do. But it was actually just a whole different other arenas. Like, it was this Anaheim Elementary Online Academy meeting that we did virtually. It was the dinner that I attended with trustee Lopez and trustee Philbeck and Dr. Grace and whatnot with the Orange County School Board Association and AXA, which I love because it's about gratitude. And like trustee Lopez was hinting at, we had lots of opportunities to network and that was great. And it's so nice seeing a lot of my friends that are in other districts to talk with, some of our, you know, wives here in other districts and whatnot, and just getting to mingle and chat and talk about what we're doing and whatnot. At the end of the night, I always leave and I'm just thankful that the topic was about gratitude because I always leave just super thankful and grateful that I'm here, a part of the Anaheim Elementary School District. And that was great. The next day, I went to a community meeting. And the reason why I bring this up is just because of the fact that it was dealing with charter schools. But this charter school and the proposal is not how we do our charter schools like Vibrant Minds, okay, formerly known as GOLDS. That is a district-sponsored charter school that we supported. We voted in favor of this because they did everything correctly. They submitted, basically, they had the community out here. We're very transparent. We basically went through. This is what the parents wanted. The charter school meeting I went to unfortunately was organized by our community, but they were very upset about it because of the fact that no community input took place. They didn't understand why, basically, we as a board haven't said anything. And it's because, and I took the opportunity to explain, this charter school that they're referring to was approved by the Orange County Board of Trustees. That is above us. That is not our jurisdiction. And as a result, they're starting, going to be creating a charter school in our community that is unwanted, that is, in many ways, we think not safe. And in a lot of ways, is really going to offer nothing in comparison to the amazing things taking place here in the Anaheim Elementary School District. And then the next day, I went over to the Oxford Parent Night, once again. And then the next day, I went over to the Oxford Parent Night, once again, playing two roles. And I got to hear from, once again, Oxford Academy, talking to all these sixth grade families and parents about why they should go to their school. I bring this up though because of the fact that the individual who is the senior student ambassador, he wasn't from Magnolia School District, he wasn't from Centralia School District, he wasn't from Cypress School District. He was from the amazing Anaheim Elementary School District. Graduate from James Gwen Elementary School. And come to find out, just lives block next door for me. So a small world. And that, oh, wait, no, psych. I joined all five of my school PTAs this afternoon because I will not be outdone by Dr. McCulloughs. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Relis. Clark Philbeck?
Okay, I got to do some pretty fun things this past few weeks. I had the opportunity, and it really was a pleasure, to take a community member around some places in our district that they just weren't really familiar with what we have been doing. They've been a longtime community member. But just to kind of lost touch of what we actually are doing and how much we have done over the past years. So I just wanted an opportunity to show this person where we're, you know, where we've, where we were, where we are now. And it was so much fun because definitely their perspective was changed. And I want to thank everybody that participated in setting up the tour. We visited the buses and transportation, you know, our mean and green fleet. So thank you JP for showing us around. And then we went to Jefferson to look at the, go into some of the classrooms for the Korean DLI program. Thank you, Principal Song. And then over to Sunkist to, because this person had never even seen one of our beautiful new schools, newer schools. And it, you know, it just blew them away. And I was so happy to be able to enlighten someone about what we really have all been working so hard for. And the pictures are coming up. It doesn't have anything to do with that. But, so I'll get there. But that's okay. You can just leave them up. So that was really a lot of fun. It was like a, what's that? It was a three-hour tour. Isn't that like Gilligan's Island or something? So that, I hadn't really done that before. And it was somebody that I had said, hey, you know, why don't you let me show you around some time? And thinking that they would say, oh, no. And they right away said, yeah, let's do this. I was like, oh, okay. No, it was, it was really fun. And, you know, it was a great experience for me too. And I got to brag about a lot of the stuff that that she was seeing. I attended the online academy, PTA meeting. And they're just doing, making great strides going forward, building, getting bigger, stronger. And it's really exciting to see that. As my colleagues mentioned, the OCSBA, Orange County School Board Association Dinner, where the speaker was Laney Powell, Raul, I'm sorry, author of Evolving with Gratitude. And it was a great, it was a great talk. And I think, you know, we do enjoy going to those things. They're only a few times a year. But it's nice to see all of the other people from the other districts that are coming in. It's kind of a a great time for us to be together and talk. The YMCA, I'm on that board, and we had a legacy dinner, which honors, there's, there's people that have actually the YMCA in their wills and in their trusts that, because the YMCA has been around a very long time. And this honors those people and also significant donors. But it's really to say thank you to just a lot of people. And we had it at the Marriott. And thank you, Yadera, Mrs. Moreno, Dr. Moreno, for coming. And it was your husband that was with you, right? So they had a date night. Yeah. So I appreciated you coming and representing AESD. It was lovely to have you. PTA council meeting at Key, such a great group. You know, I was thinking back, I found a button the other day that I have had for thirty-five years back from PTA when my kids were at Benito Juarez. And all it says is, I love PTA. And I have hung on to that button for this long because it just says it all. I really love PTA. And this group, this council group and all of the representatives from the schools are, they're just amazing. And the things that, every time I walk in that room, every month, I'm just like blown away at all the stuff that's going on. So thank you. And lastly, this kind of just happened today. Now, that's, this is what a couple of these pictures are. Okay, I'm in the park, right? And I see a couple of guys minding their own business, having their lunch. But they have AESD shirts on. And you know, I can't let that go. I was over Pearson, I think it was. So, and I, you know, I thought, oh, I'm not going to bother them. They're having their lunch. And I thought, yeah, I'm going to bother them because they've got AESD shirts on. So I'm, I said, that's okay. Talk to me. Tell me about what you're doing. And, you know, I won't, they sort of recognized me, so I don't think I scared them too much. I had my grandchildren with me. But, so I said, I'm going to give you the biggest shout out to Gustavo Fernandez and Jaime Rubacalva. And Gustavo started with our district when he was nineteen years old and he has been here thirty-six years. Jaime has been here twenty-three years. And I said, tell me what you do, you know, where, what department? They're in maintenance and operations, but they are full-time painters. And I don't think I've ever talked about painters. I've, you know, I've shadowed maintenance before in a fixed fences and backflow thingies and sprinklers and, you know. But I have not shadowed the painters, which I want to do now. So I said, send me some pictures. But, you know, they don't just paint, they do paint the buildings. And there was actually some, they sent me some pictures that were kind of late. So I'll just describe them. The one up there on the, the, on the left is, I believe, actually a pickleball court that, at Lincoln and Gwen Schools. They do a lot of the blacktop things, games and stuff like this, you know, that we put on the blacktops. Even the parking things, lines, they do. So, but then they also do the outside of the buildings. They are presently painting Man. That's what they said. They're not done yet, but they're painting Man. And then there's, I wish I had this picture, but at Jefferson, there's a big, long, like, blue path road. And it's for the tricycles in the preschool. Okay, so, and then they just do a lot of building painting. They were, I think, I believe this painting is, or they were painting Edison. So this is what they do full-time. They couldn't have been nicer. I just had the most enjoyable conversation. So thank you, Gus and Jaime for taking the time to educate me on a little bit more of what you do and how you do it. And they are just such fine examples of who we have here. I love to run into people that work at the district and they were very pleasant and kind to me. And I said, well, if you're late to lunch, then you just say that Jackie Philbeck didn't let you go. So you can use me as the excuse because they were getting a little nervous. And I'm like, no, it's okay. I'm, you know, you could, you can tell Jackie said it's okay. I said, I don't carry a lot of weight, but it might help. It might help. So thank you, Gus and Jaime, for a really pleasant conversation and for being so kind to really explain a lot of what you do. And thank you for your service to this district combination of fifty-nine years or something like that, some of, between two people. And, you know, you got to love that. And the last is I joined PTAs, the online academy, Edison, Westmont, Man, Jefferson, Franklin, Gwen, Benito Juarez, Gower, and Price so far. And I will catch the rest of you. I promise. I was just hitting so many buttons trying to, you know, rejoin in totem or whatever it is. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Clark Philbeck. I just want to start off, first of all, in wishing Dr. McCulloughs a happy birthday. His birthday was on Monday, right? Yeah. So if you guys will join me in singing happy birthday, please. Alrighty, one, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Dr. McCulloughs. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
And that concludes my report. Okay, let's move on to future agenda items. Any future agenda items?
I do have one, sorry.
It's okay, don't apologize.
You know, prior to the pandemic, one of the big things that we've been working on is, and it was awesome that we actually had in our district, in Anaheim Union's district, the closest calendar, right? Especially when we moved from a multiple track into single track. And for some reason right now, it always comes right before the holidays, you know, parents talking about, oh, you know, why do we have three weeks? They have two weeks. Why is it spring break here? Can we kind of bring back and have more discussions about our calendars and possibly trying to make them a little closer? I mean, they're the, they're the closest I know possible, right? And I know both districts are working hard, but can we, can we look at that again when we come back? Sometime. Thank you.
Dr. McCulloughs, if I could, I just wanted to make a comment on that too, since you brought it up. And since it's your birthday, you're welcome to make a future agenda item. So don't have to apologize for that. But I did want to, if we're going to agendize that item, I also wanted, it's not just our two districts. I also want us to remember that there are other elementary school districts that are also involved. So I don't know what their calendars look like, but it's more of a global discussion, probably, because I'm sure Anaheim Union's aligned and unaligned with certain districts. So, right, there's five elementary school districts within the area of Anaheim Union. So I think that if we are going to agendize, it might be a good idea to also invite other districts to have that discussion as well.
If I could, we're happy to agendize it, but we do work with a committee of stakeholders and the approval of, you know, making recommendations to bring it to you guys for approval. Our calendar for next year has been approved. So we would invite the high school district to, you know, work with us and align their calendar as close to ours as possible. So there's that opportunity, but we're happy to bring it forward and we'll, we'll have a discussion and definitely be able to explain why we support, you know, the three weeks for our staff members. Alright.
Thank you. Any other items? Nope. Alright, so let's move to adjournment. Our next meeting will be next on Wednesday, November ninth, and I adjourn this meeting at eight, twenty PM. Thank you.